I call the Wayne County Board of Commissioners meeting to order for March 15th. Our invocation today is from Vice Chairman Wayne Acock.
Bear his place. To your Father, thank you for today. Thank you for your many blessings. We ask that you be with us as we make decisions for the county. Just give us the wisdom and to make the right decisions for the citizens of Wayne County. We ask that you be with the leaders of our state and we ask that you be with the leaders of our nation because we're living in troubled times and we just pray that they will make the right decisions. We ask that you be with our first responders, our law enforcement, our fire, our EMS, 911 call takers. We ask that you be with them, keep them safe. We ask that you be with our many women in uniform. We are a military family near God. We have friends and neighbors that are deployed. We ask that you be with their families here back home and keep them safe. We just ask all of this in your name. Amen.
And Commissioner Barbara Acock.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of March 1st.
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, adjustments of the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning. We would like to move under special presentations, put number two at number one, and then number one, number two. And then we would like to add to our consent agenda the following, and please bear with me, there's a lot that we're adding. Under number six, under consent agenda, approval of CDM Smith, Michael Baker International, Timmons Group, and Withers Ravenel as on-call engineering firms for Wayne County. And again, that would be with the appropriate approval from our county attorney. Number seven is approval for contract with ECS for environmental testing at new jail Number eight, approval of CDM Smith for AI work for viable utility reserve grant program from NCDEQ. And again, that will be with final approval from our county attorneys. Number eight, approval of professional services contract with Withers and Ravenel for Genoa system evaluation along with appropriate budget amendment. Again, this will be with approval of our county attorney. And we also had two budget amendments that we did add in consent, budget number 367 and 371. And also when we do, there is a revision to the agreement with the resolution with Wayne Community College that we did place up in front of you as well.
Okay, anything else? That's enough, huh?
Yes, sir.
All right, I do need a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. All those, any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay. And now we go to special presentations. Commissioner Acock.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for giving me the honor and privilege of a resolution for Ms. Kate Daniels. Me and Ms. Daniels has already had a discussion. I am tickled to death that she is moving forward, but I'm also mad with her for leaving. But do you want us to go down?
Yes, listen to me.
Everyone let's go down and then I'll read the resolution.
Okay.
I will.
Resolution honoring Kate Daniels for her years of service to Wayne County and the Wayne County Chamber of Commerce, whereas Kate Daniels became the president of Wayne County Chamber of Commerce in May of 2013, and whereas Kate Daniels became the face of Wayne County, not only its business leaders, but the neighboring towns and counties as well. Whereas Kate Daniels promoted and attended over 500 ribbon cuttings for small businesses, and whereas Kate Daniels promoted and attended over 800 community events, and whereas Kate Daniels support Wayne, the county of Wayne, and all of its municipalities, as well as Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, whereas Kate Daniels has tackled community issues, advocated for business, and brought the community together through difficult and challenging times. And whereas Kate Daniels did all of this while raising family with her husband Jeremiah. Now be it therefore resolved by the Wayne County Board of Commissioners and on behalf of the business owners and citizens of Wayne County that March 15th, 2022 will be Kate Daniels' Day in Wayne County. And the Board of Commissioners invites every citizen to thank Ms. Daniels for her dedication to our community. Give this day the 15th day of March, 2022. Thank you.
Well, the one thing that this amazing team said was, don't cry today. But thank you all so much. Thank you for the opportunity to serve our chairman of the board. Kevin Johnson is amazing, but this team is amazing. We're missing Janet Brock with us right now, but Linda Murray and Laura Landers and Michaela Alves. And over 600 businesses here in Wayne County are part of our chamber. So the really cool thing about this year is we are in our 125th year. So our chamber has been a part of this community and the business community for 125 years, and I'm telling you all the best is yet to come. And I'm so thankful for the opportunity to have served in that role. And I'm not going anywhere. I'm still in Wayne County. I'm still going to be promoting and just really appreciate the opportunity. I've had to work with each of you and so many that came before you, and great things to come for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's get it going. And I must say here, with a closer look, you know, I'm older. It does look like she's 10 years younger, doesn't it?
Joel's actually saying, he says he's got the picture.
So you're good.
Mr. Chairman, I need a motion. We need a motion to approve the resolution?
We do.
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, okay, discussion.
First off, I just want to thank you. Kate has been amazing. Me as a small business owner, you know, she's been in ribbon cuttings with success stories about business, and I just greatly appreciate everything you've done. It's going to be very challenging because you're probably one of the bravest individuals that walks this county, and I was honored to meet you, honored to talk with you, and to talk with you upon some more that could be happened, which we want.
There will be more. Thank you so much.
Okay, any other comments or discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. As unanimous.
Thank you all so much. Thank you.
And Mr. County Manager, before we proceed on, as everyone can tell, we're having a little issue in regards to our heat, and so therefore we are establishing as chair that you may remove your jackets if you feel so moved because it's hot. I'll take my jacket off, y'all can go ahead and stay hot. Go ahead, Mr.
Next, we do want to do our employee service pins.
All right, beginning with the one-year pins, Jeff Garin with the Sheriff's Office.
Wendy Kearney, DSS Income Maintenance. I'm sorry, Wendy Kearney, DSS Income Maintenance. Rosalyn Hamilton, DSS Income Maintenance.
Oh, they're out in the hallway.
You, Rosalyn? Matthew Crane, Public Health Administration. Matthew Crane. Dylan Corbett with the Sheriff's Office. Shanita Sutton with the Detention Center. Joseph Brown, DSS Regular Services Administration. Kara Johnson, DSS Regular Services Administration. Yenifer Campos, Detention Center. Kevin Manuel, Detention Center. David Evans, Sheriff Office. All right, that ends our one-years. We'll move on to our five-year pins. All right, Karen Peel, DSS Income Maintenance. Kelly Hankins, DSS Regular Services. Stephanie Edwards with the Library. Lady Salinas with Public Health. Adore Clark with the Library. Carrie Boland with DSS Administration. Megan Wilson with the Library. And County Manager, Craig Honeycutt.
Matt Clark, Mr. Kenneth Dupree, did you call him?
They call who now? Kenneth Dupree?
Mm-hmm.
I do not have his name, sir.
Okay. He was on the list I built in the packet, that's why I mentioned that.
Oh, this is a different one that they give me once they get confirmation, sir.
Got you. Okay.
All right, our 10-year pins, beginning with Cheryl Jackson, DSS Administration. Betsy Hood with the Tax Department. Michael Evans, Facility Services. Montrina Boni, DSS Income Maintenance. Philip Durham with the Sheriff's Office. Faye Warren, Public Health Maternity Care Project. Kimberly Hammond, DSS Regular Services Administration. That concludes our 10-year. We'll move to 15-year. William Cornell with the Sheriff's Office. Zachary Kinlaw with the Sheriff's Office. Ms. Allison Spate with Finance, who is not here, she's at a conference, but we'll make sure she gets out. Janice, I can accept it. There we go. Lisa Stewart, DSS Income Maintenance. Prudencia Moore, DSS Regular Services Administration. Casey Degrecci Roberts, Public Health Dental. And now on to our 20-years. We begin with Pam Maglio Shetty with DSS Administration. Delmas Cox with the Landfill. Wendy Bailey, Public Health Maternity Care Project. Nanette Sutton, EMS. All right, and our final two are both 25-year pins, and we'll begin with Ms. Bonnie Kraus, And Mr. Steve Stroud, Inspections.
No 30-year? All right. Y'all have a good day.
Take care.
All right, our next item on our agenda is a motion to approve April as Children's and Families Month proclamation. We're great.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having us here this morning, and it is actually very important that all of those folks were just recognized because they are important to the fabric of protecting children in Wayne County every single day. So let's give all of them a round of applause for their service. Good morning, everyone. My name is Melissa Harrell. I'm the Mental Health Services Manager at Wages for our Head Start and Early Head Start programs. I'm delighted to be here this morning, though, as the voice and representation for a new group that is pressing forward in Wayne County called Wayne Cares. I'm going to ask my Vanna White Assistant here this morning, this is Shelley Willis with the Partnership for Children, she's going to be giving each of you a packet with the information that I'll be going over because it will be like drinking from a fire hose, and I know that we have lots on the agenda, so you can review it later. But Wayne Cares stands for Coalition on Abuse, Resiliency, Education, and Support. And this group actually grew out of the work that was already here in Wayne County to recognize every April as Child Abuse Awareness Month. And while that is a very noble cause, what we feel like would be a better effort would be to support children and families all year long because child abuse and prevention are important topics, not just in the month of April, but should be waived and done every single day of the year. So what we plan to do, our mission statement, is to lessen the impacts of multi-generational trauma by building support through awareness, education, and advocacy. And our vision for Wayne County is to be a resilient and compassionate community where everyone feels safe and has a sense of belonging. And I know in a time where we feel divided on many issues, whether it's political or other issues, I know that there is one thing that we can all get behind in this room, and that is the protection and love of children. No one will argue, I hope, with that particular point that we have. So we are very excited about this work. We've been meeting for approximately a year now. We have a robust group of folks at the table that represent every type of agency and community support here in Wayne County. However, we are open and ready for as many people who would like to get on board with us. Part of what we're doing this month when we move into April, we will be doing those traditional things, and you have a list in front of you. And for those of you watching online or in the room, you can certainly go to the Wayne County Partnership for Children or Wages website to get this information. The traditional color to support children in child abuse protection is blue, so we ask in the month of April that you wear blue, except for on April 8th, which is Purple Up Day, where we will recognize our military families and children who, as you said earlier, we are a military community, and in these challenging times, we want to stand behind our children and families. And so that'll be Purple Up Day. But the rest of the month, wear blue every single day, so get your closets ready. The other things that we will be doing, we will be showing the movie. It's a documentary of, if you have not seen this, it is a must for you to do, that recognizes the impacts of trauma on the life of children. We think about protecting children, but trauma is very prevalent in our society. Two out of three people in this room have experienced one adverse childhood experience. That's a lot of trauma. And that doesn't stop when you turn 18. That transitions and transforms into every piece of your life. And so we have law enforcement in this room, we have judicial services represented, we have folks in this room in public health and who support substance abuse. If we really want to negate all the problems that we are dealing with daily in this community, we must start by advocating and addressing childhood trauma because it is at the root of every single social issue that we want to deal with here in Wayne County and globally as well. So if you have not seen this film, you will have opportunities. The University of Mount Olive is hosting us on April the 11th at 6:30 PM. April the 14th, Wayne Community College will be hosting a viewing at 6:30 PM. We have a virtual showing online for those who are unable to attend in person, and that'll be 6:30 PM. And the Paramount Theater at 11:30 AM, and a box lunch can be included, so if you want to grab a lunch and come and watch with us that day, that will be at 11:30 with the film starting at 12, and that is on April the 28th. If you would like to view the film in the privacy of your own home, you can reach out to me or the Partnership for Children, and we can provide you with a link to be able to watch that and process how important it is to address and protect children. And so at this time, I'm going to read the proclamation for this month. Whereas our children are our most valuable resources and will shape the future of Wayne County, whereas the quality of parenting caregiving is one of the most powerful protective factors for children, our community recognizes the long-term value of offering as many services to support positive environments for children and families. Whereas Wayne County is the home to Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, and we recognize that our military force or presence comes not just from those who wear the uniform, but from their families who also serve on behalf of our country. Whereas April is Month of the Military Child, and military children make daily sacrifices so their parents can keep our nation safe, we must match their sacrifice with a commitment to provide the full support of our communities. Whereas April the 2nd through the 8th is National Week of the Young Child, where access to affordable, high-quality education and healthcare for every child in our community, particularly in the first five years, is vital to building a strong community, state and nation. Whereas our community recognizes the tireless efforts of those in Wayne County who work in various agencies, nonprofits, childcare facilities, and schools that offer care and services to families as we move towards creating a safe, healthy, and equitable community for our children and families. Whereas April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month, to recognize that child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. Whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences throughout a lifetime. Whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families, and effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of community collaborations. Whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families, these efforts create protective factors which are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. Whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse, generational trauma, and early childhood education. This morning, I asked the county commissioners to bless this proclamation and declare April as Children and Families Month.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the proclamation?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? You're in on, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, thank you. Unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next item on the agenda is a presentation on We Dig It Ag Days. Well, there's Mr. Kevin. Good morning.
Me again, I'm sorry. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you so much. I'm not going to sit up here and steal the thunder, but I do want to introduce Emily Odom. Her and her husband JR have been instrumental in our We Dig It Ag Days. I think a lot of y'all have been out there. If you're not, we're going to invite you to come for sure, but it's a big deal. I'm not, like I said, I don't want to steal any thunder. I do want you to know that I think we've been doing this nine years or...
Yeah, we were talking about it earlier. We can't exactly remember what date, but we feel sure it's been about nine years.
About nine years. Of course, we had two years that COVID affected us, but y'all did approve years ago to sponsor this, and it goes through my budget, so y'all are a sponsor of this program. I did want you to know that. So anyway, without further ado, Emily Odom.
I'm going to tell you how you're spending your money. So if you don't know me, I'm Emily Odom. I'm here on behalf of Wayne County Farm Bureau, specifically today, the Young Farmer and Rancher Group, who puts on this event. We're going to be doing We Dig It Ag Day at my farm, it's Odom Farming Company in Rosewood, on April 7th. It's going to be from like 8 to 2, and we're going to have all of the second grades in Wayne County out. It's going to be about 1,500 kids, plus speakers from all of the high schools, Golsboro High School included. We're having their host group, all the FFAs from the county out, to be speaking to these kids. They're going to rotate from 12 stations that kind of encompass all of Wayne County agriculture, and learn about what we do in our county, learn about what farmers do, where their food comes from, where their fiber comes from, and what they see when they're riding around in the county every day watching tractors go by. We partner with a lot of different groups with this, Midfield, Extension, the Beekeepers, Forest Service. A lot of folks come together to make this possible. We provide lunch boxes for the kids to take home, so they're able to share these information with their parents and family members, and we just think it's a great day. Like Kevin said, we were talking, I think it's been about nine years we've been doing this. On our farm, we're an agritourism farm, so we invite people onto the farm to experience farm life, I guess, because that's fun. Anybody who was out there Saturday with me all night long burning hay bales in my orchard would not have loved to experience farm... long burning hay bales in my orchard, would not have loved to experience farm life that night. That was no fun. But the day-to-day normal stuff, people get to experience. And we noticed when people were coming to our farm that they really didn't realize where their food was coming from. We kind of take for granted that we live in a somewhat rural community, and everybody sees farms all the time, but that's not necessarily true. We were having kids come in from Goldsboro that may not get that opportunity, and we had potatoes planted, and they did not realize that that's how potatoes grow. They thought you just got them from the grocery store. And I've had grown adults that did not realize that hamburger comes from cows. So that's where we got this idea. JR said, you know, I used to do something like this when I was in high school in FFA. So we took it on. We partnered with Farm Bureau, and they took the reins, and we got this thing planned. And our hope is to at least have the kids have one opportunity to come out to a farm, meet a farmer, figure out where it's coming from. And so eventually, they'll take that with them their whole life, especially in this time where our supply chains are being less global and more local. At least they'll kind of have a point of contact to help figure out where all this stuff is coming from. So that's going to be on April 7th. We'd love to have all you guys out there. It's going to be a great day. We usually have a good lunch, so we definitely love to see you there. We have any questions?
Great program, and we really appreciate you sponsoring this and putting you on. I know it takes a lot of effort on your part, but it is, it's really appreciated.
We appreciate it. It's kind of like a well-oiled machine at this moment.
There you go. Any other comments?
I've been twice with two of the girls anyway, so I know it's nine years because Caroline's in the 11th grade.
Yeah.
Very good program.
What time of the morning is it, Scotty?
So we split the second graders into two batches, just, you know, because 1,500 at one time is a lot. So they come on, I think they're going to start getting there about 8:30, and then they'll be there for about an hour and a half, and then we'll have a short break, and then the next group comes on, and they'll be leaving by 2:00. So you've got several opportunities to come out.
Yeah, they get out there about noon time. That's where they watch us.
Yeah, yeah. I think we're going to do like barbecue and maybe pulled chicken sandwiches, so come on out.
Bring a coat.
You never know. We have roasted and burned out there. So then we started like providing water for the kids, and then it was 20 degrees one year, and we were all in bib overalls and freezing our butts off.
Yeah, I remember that.
I know. I always say, you can always count on cold spells to at least Easter. And this is before Easter, so you never know.
Say that a little louder. Say that a little louder.
You can always count on cold spells to at least Easter.
So don't do a lot of planting until after.
Absolutely. Otherwise, you're up in your orchard at 2:00 a.m.
I'm just saying. I'm just saying.
All right, I had a little issue with my garden last year.
He has a beautiful.
I understand.
No, I covered it up. About like you out there burning hay bales, not doing that.
It was an experience.
Well, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
For our non-farmers, and people like myself who are a little illiterate to farm life, what would the kids experience? Is it going to be any strawberries at that time of the season?
So no, strawberry season in our part of North Carolina goes from about mid-April to maybe Memorial Day, maybe later, you know, just weather-dependent. So we won't quite have strawberries ready, but we have 12 stations. So we have like a hayride where they can ride through equipment and see. We've got dairy goats. We're going to have dairy goats from Holly Grove come out, so the kids will actually see the goats. We're going to have beef cows there, sweet potatoes, row crops like corn, soybeans, cotton, weeds. We have an ornamental horticulture station for our landscapers and stuff that are out there. Am I missing? Yeah, Forest Service, they're going to be there. We have a forestry station, because all of that's part of ag, and we have a bee station. So usually, we have some folks from the Beekeepers come out and bring observation hives, so the kids can see the bees, because they are vitally important to our produce. I can't remember how many bites every bee produces, but all your strawberries, anything like that has to be pollinated, and honeybees are usually our first line of defense. So all kinds of stuff.
And the local FFA chapters help?
That's what we love so much about it, because at these stations, the local FFA chapters and the host of the chapter from Goldsboro, they're the ones doing the speaking. So it's kind of like a double. There, the kids are learning from the older kids who are learning how to public speak and present. When I grew up, my grandma used to put me in speech competitions and stuff, and I hated it. And now I'm so grateful, because I have to speak a lot, and you don't think about that, you know, when you're doing it at the time. But so it gives them an opportunity to teach and speak and be leaders, which is what FFA is all about. And even the Goldsboro kids, they're getting, we do a nutrition station, so we're trying to help them make better choices and learn about which foods are better. So they play a game with them. So it's interactive. They're not just sitting there. A lot of this, the kids are really inventive, and they've come up with all kinds of fun ways for these kids to learn. So we love it.
Okay, well, thank you again so much.
All right, well, I have these invitations. Leave them with you guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. Honeycutt, I think you've got an introduction.
I do. Would like to introduce Amanda Justice. Amanda is our new Travel and Tourism Director for the city of Goldsboro, Wayne County.
Don't be bashful. Come on up.
We are very lucky and very pleased to have Amanda. She went through a really good interview process. We did that with the city. But a little background on Amanda. She most recently served as Tourism Director for Duplin County for the last nine years, along with overseeing the Duplin Events Center for the last three years. She has over a decade of hospitality industry experience, ranging from operations to regional group sales. Prior to work in Duplin County, Amanda worked for ZMC Hotels here in Goldsboro, and is originally from Kinston. She is married to Chris Justice, and they reside in Duplin County on a small hobby farm. But we appreciated Amber's, excuse me, my wife is Amber, Amanda, her willingness to... Sorry about that.
That's a Catholic word.
Her willingness to, when the job was open, and she really just blew us away during interviews of her knowledge, her background, and really her experience of what she can do with all the assets that we do have here in Wayne County and Goldsboro, to really move travel and tourism forward. So with that said, let me introduce them. Amanda?
We have to put it with the mic.
Like I said, I've been called worse, so it's fine.
It's nothing new.
All right, the mic's yours.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you for having me this morning, and I'm about almost three, four weeks in, so I'm really excited for the opportunity to see how far we can take travel and tourism in the city and the county.
Well, great. Great. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Well, great. All right, our next item on unfinished business, possible motion to proceed with the design schematics on the proposed Wayne County Fuel Station and appropriate budget amendment.
As the board is aware, we've been working on this. Wayne County does not have a fuel system in the county, so I think with all the issues that we've had with ice storms and supply chain issues, we felt like that we needed to have our own supply of fuel so we can make sure all of our emergency services can operate. So we've been working on this for about a year, trying to first, it had to be rezoned. We're looking at the Klingman site where Facility Services is. We had to get it rezoned. We have to look at site plans. But what we're at the point now is it will start costing us a little bit of money for design work. We want to make sure that we get the right-sized tanks in, that we get the right-sized system in, but we wanted to really bring it in front of the board, basically saying that we want to get to design schematics, and then that would include the appropriate budget amendment.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we pursue the design schematics of the proposed Wayne County Fuel Station with appropriate budget amendment.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion?
I think we're moving in the right direction. This subject came up several years ago, and we had other priorities that we had to put in front of it. But many, many years ago, Wayne County had a fuel distribution center at what was the old hospital, or the DSS and Health Center now, but it had to be, it was obsolete, and the county had to do away with it. But I think we're moving in the right direction for this, because in the times that we're living in now, we never know when there's going to be a fuel shortage, and we certainly got to keep our first responders, our law enforcement, EMS, we've got to make sure that they are readily available all the time.
Mr. Chairman, I know I harped on this for a while, but I appreciate, I've worried ship to death, I know, and Craig, but I appreciate the efforts in moving it forward. I mean, just to ensure that we've got adequate fuel supply, you know, for a short-term event anyway. So I appreciate you.
And again, thanks for Commissioner Gurley. We appreciate him pushing this forward and what he's done, and Noel, you know, trying to make sure that we do this and do this correctly.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by raising your right hand. Okay. Appointment Committee.
Yes, sir. We do have some appointments, and I'm going to have our Vice Chair of the Appointment Committee, Mr. Gurley, to redelive.
Okay.
Okay, we've got the following. We met this morning and last, or two weeks ago, and we submit the following. A motion to appoint John Gardner to the Belfast, Pactown Sanitary District, filling the vacancy of the late Fred Nukem, as requested by their board, and that's a form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay.
Also, we have a motion to reappoint Eddie Pitzer to the Wayne County Animal Control Advisory Board. That's a form of a motion as well.
All right, a motion is on the floor. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay.
Next on the list is the motion to appoint Johnny Bryant to the Wayne County Planning Board, and that's filling the vacancy of Mr. Hobart Yates, and that's a form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand.
Next, we, next we have the motion to have a motion to appoint Keith Harris to the Wayne County Board of Health, as requested by their board, and that's a form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay.
Next, we have a motion to appoint Pilar Parks and Elizabeth Orka to the Wayne County Latino Council, and that's in form of a motion.
Okay, a motion on the floor. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand.
And last but not least, we have a motion to appoint Lyman Peaton to replace the late Zed Musgrave as the Fire Commissioner for Pactown Volunteer Fire Department. That's requested by their Board of Directors, and that's a form of a motion.
Okay, a motion on the floor. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand.
And I'll turn it back over to our Appointment Chair.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our appointments.
And we appreciate the efforts of the Appointment Committee, because undoubtedly is a full day's work. Thank you so much.
Two days, actually.
Two days. Okay. All right, we now move to our consent agenda, and we went over these items at our agenda meeting, so I entertain a motion to approve. All right, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. And we move now to new business. Mr. Honeycutt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is Doc Pfeifer? Yes, Doc Pfeifer and her team is here. Again, the discussion of partial approval of Wayne County to be the funding source for two years for the four-year SCIF funding for the new Center for Industrial Technology and Engineering, building at Wayne Community College, and appropriate budget amendment. Again, this would allow the county to upfront the community college, their SCIF funding. Doc Pfeifer, please come up. I'm sorry. I'll let you explain it, Doc Pfeifer. But well, we're glad you're here.
Well, good morning. Good morning. Thank you for allowing us to be here, and thank you for considering this item. As you are very aware, we are in the business of promoting economic development through workforce development. We have an opportunity to build a freestanding applied technology center. We're calling it our Site, or Center for Industrial Technology and Engineering, and we have received some funding from the state in the form of SCIF funding. And that allocation is over a four-year period of time, but right now, we are only able to receive two years of that, and that is $9,149 million. Half of that funding, we do not have access to until their next biennial budget. So we are asking if the county can upfront us those funds. It will be on a cash flow basis. As we begin to build this project, we will repay those funds as we receive funds, unless for some reason, the next General Assembly decides not to give us half of that funding. I know.
Give a little bit of explanation regards to some of the job skills that we're creating.
Absolutely, absolutely. So some of the programs that we will house in that building will be mechanical engineering, industrial systems, mechatronics, HVAC. We are looking also at putting some of our short-term training. We realize that business and industry sometimes needs trained workers in a very short period of time, so short-term training will be integrated into that building. We feel that we most definitely can impact students and our business and industries by providing a state-of-the-art facility to provide this type of applied tech training to our students, who will then become citizens of, hopefully, Wayne County, and provide to our tax base and overall benefit the county as a whole.
And the other thing I would like a little bit, let's go ahead and add a boy to the foundation and their role in this.
Absolutely. So our foundation is also very committed to this project. They have committed a million dollars of their own funds, and are currently in a capital fund project, which we will soon bring out to the public for another $1.5 million. So there is investment from our own foundation, and obviously, we will use money from the state to complete this project.
I questioned you a great deal today, but I appreciate.
That's perfectly fine.
I think the public needs to know that really, there's a lot of, it's a team effort in order to bring this project.
You know, including the county as a whole, because you support our buildings and our infrastructure. And as I shared with you yesterday, you know, the county has always been good to Wayne Community College, and I will assure you that we will be good stewards of your funds as we go along. There will be an agreement that we'll have to sign, and I totally understand that. But please know, there is a chance, if we get year three and four, we will not use a dime of your funds.
Okay, are we getting a mortgage on this building? Okay.
Doc Pfeifer?
Yes, sir.
While you're up here, you may not have the exact figures, but I'm pretty sure you remember them. Kind of let the board know, and our viewers who's watching, where Wayne Community College stands in the Wayne Community College, in the college facility, I mean, the 58 community colleges in the state, kind of where Wayne County ranks in the state and in the nation?
Well, we, of the 58 community colleges, we're a medium-sized college, but we are relatively a very progressive college, in that in the funding that we'll receive from SCIF, we're probably up in the top 15 of the amount of funding that we're going to get for this project. We have very strong retention rates, very strong graduation rates. I'm not 100% sure what the other question that you were asking.
And nationally, I may not be.
Nationally? Okay, nationally.
Wayne Community is American to recognize nationally outside.
Yes, we have been recently in the Aspen ranks the colleges. We are a top 150 college for Aspen in the nation. In 2020, we received a Student Success Award from the American Association of Community Colleges. So we were first in that. I pride myself on that, because that is what we are about. We are about student success. We have been a Bellwether finalist. The Bellwether Consortium looks at colleges that have progressive programs that can be replicated at other colleges, focused on student success, especially for those that are African-American, Hispanic, or for low-income students. We have been a finalist of that in the last three years. So we are very much a nationally-recognized institution. So we are very much a nationally-recognized institution that have strong programs to help our students be successful, both on the curriculum side and on the short-term training side.
And also, Wayne Community College has got now a fantastic working relationship with the Wayne County Public Schools and also with the University of Mount Olive. I mean, because all three of those groups, it's got, it's got the same objective, is to educate our students.
Absolutely. So we are sitting at the table and deciding how we can impact big programs to our students, introduce them to different career fields, and we are definitely sitting around the table as a team between the three entities.
Mr. Chair, Dr. Pfeifer, elaborate as you did yesterday on the short-term classes or certificates, the apprenticeships, and working with the businesses and all that we talked about yesterday.
Absolutely.
To kind of let everybody know, because a lot of people are not aware of the short end. I wasn't on the short-term classes, as you know.
Right. If you look at our campus, we basically have two different sides. We have a curriculum side, where you think about students coming to us to get degrees, diplomas, certificates. But we also have what we call workforce training side, and we also have a transitional program. Transitional programs are for students who have not achieved a high school diploma through a traditional route, who have had to stop out for whatever reason that interrupted their life, so we have transitional programs. But our work, short-term workforce training programs, provide short-term skills. For example, instead of coming into a welding program for an entire year to get a diploma, maybe somebody who is working full-time, who knows how to stick weld, but wants to do a MIG or a TIG welding for the industry that they're working at, can come in and get that in a seven-to-eight week period of time, go back to industry, now have that skill, and maybe receive higher wage because of that. We have, like for example, our certified nursing assistant. We know that need is very great in our allied health career fields, so that training is a 16-week training or an accelerated eight-week training. So an individual can come to us with a high school diploma, appropriate reading level, because it is a reading-intensive, and be able to finish that training in either eight weeks or 16 weeks, and then go out and have a job that they can receive a life-sustaining wage and support their families in Wayne County. We have a multitude of different careers that you can come and do that. We also do a lot of public safety training through our short-term workforce, our firemen, all their updates, the Fireman's Academy. We have a lot of law enforcement officers who come to us for some short-term training. So there's a multitude. We hit business areas, public safety, allied health, industrial systems, and applied technology, so there's a variety of short-term training. I feel our institution can grow by providing more short-term training to the students that we serve in Wayne County and those that come to us from outside Wayne County for that training. So we are going to put emphasis, and my vision is to grow that. But to grow that, I need to have the space to be able to do that. As I told you guys yesterday, I need to put my money where my mouth is. If I say I'm going to grow short-term training, I need to give them the space to be able to do that and increase that enrollment and provide the skilled and highly-trained individuals to move into our workforce in Wayne County.
And you also provide, one of course, is a truck driver.
We also have truck drivers. That is something that, because we knew that there was such a high demand, we moved into truck driver training probably about a year ago, and it has been very successful. Our students are coming out right, as soon as they graduate, they can make approximately $55,000 right out of the gate. Right now, that training is going from anywhere from 12 to 16 weeks, depending the format. If you have to come in the evenings and weekends, it takes a little bit longer, but we are also looking to expand that training too.
Our relationship with several businesses in town that are into shipping or delivery-type business, and they are having a, that's a big, that's a big issue.
Yes, yes. I have great hopes...
It's not an old man's job.
It is. I understand that. We have great hope building this site building that you're going to assist us with. If you vote in the affirmative to be able to do that, my next goal is to put a real truck-driving pad on that campus so we can do, to expand truck driving. We, right now, we're using a gravel parking lot to do that.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to say thank you, Patty, for the presentation, Dr. Pfeifer, for the presentation yesterday. Very informative. Like a lot of you know, I was Production Control Department Head at Cooper Standard for 17 and a half years. My former plant manager, Jim Pry, reached out to me yesterday, and he done this quote, "Does my heart good to see this program put into place?" Because in manufacturing, you know, for years when I was there, it was hard to find skilled labor to come in. The company themselves done a lot of training and a lot of education, but it's going to be great to have these students come in already trained, ready to go for these companies. Mr. Pry was an excellent plant manager here in Goldsboro for, I think he stayed here in Goldsboro for about seven years. He was one of my favorite. He had vision that a lot of people, and he used to talk about a program like this, and that's why he reached out to me and stated it does his heart good to see this implemented. And I want to thank everyone for getting this started. Like I said, my grandson's in this. He started out in college transfer. He just didn't feel like that was a good fit for him, and he's moved into this program, and he is just finding all kinds of education levels that he probably wouldn't have got into a college transfer. So I want to thank Wayne Community College for getting this kicked off, and I know a lot of the manufacturing here in Wayne County and elsewhere will be very thankful for this also, and thank you all for this.
Well, we're glad we can serve your grandson out on our campus and all the other students that we do serve on our campus. What she was referring to yesterday, for those of you that are listening in, is we had a ribbon cutting for our newly-renovated and expanded welding area. And anybody who, any citizen of Wayne County who wants to come see what we have on campus, our doors are open. All you have to do is call Wayne Community College, and we'll be glad to tour you around and show you what great programs that we have and what great opportunities we have for them and their family members.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
As I mentioned yesterday also, I did not realize what a jewel we had in Wayne Community College. I've taken, I mean, courses through fire service from Wayne Community College, but you kind of, you know, you kind of take it for granted. You ride by on Wayne Memorial, you look over, and, well, that's a nice-looking college. And until I got, until y'all asked me to serve on the Board of Trustees at the college, I did not realize what we had. You just, it's one of those things you just take for granted. But Wayne Community College is one of the greatest assets that Wayne County has. I mean, we've got a lot of assets, but Wayne Community, it's, it was eye-opening for me to, when I got on that board, to see what was going on at Wayne Community College.
I often say we're the best-kept secret in Wayne County. I need to come out to campus and see what they've got.
I think I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the fact that the Chairman of your board, Jeff Holst, is here, and Mr. Holst, if you'd like to make any comments, the microphone is yours.
I might be dangerous.
I've never seen a attorney that didn't like to speak.
I'd just like to say, you know, and thank you. The board, any Board of Trustees of Community College, the most important duty they have is to select the next president of the college, and it was a unanimous decision to ask Dr. Pfeifer to be our president. And as you've heard from her, you can tell we made the right decision. But thank you all for your helping us in our plans for this community. We appreciate Vice Chair Acock being on the board. He brings a lot to our discussions. We have our, a lot of members of our President's Council here, so we're real excited about what's going on in Wayne County and glad to be a part of it. Thank you for letting me speak.
Well, one thing that I don't think the public recognize, and that is the volunteer board that you have, because they serve as volunteers, and they are instrumental in your improvement of your college as well as Wayne County. So we appreciate that. Please express that appreciation to your board.
We're having our retreat Friday, and I'll carry that to all the Board of Trustee members and like the Commissioners. We're from across the county and the city and try to do a good job representing all the interests. And I just can't resist, it's nice seeing the new Tourism Director introduced. It's glad to see a little justice in the courthouse.
I'm not good at one-liners.
Well, great. Thank you so much for the, for your work, and we are glad to assist in this effort and look forward to the ribbon cutting. That said, do I have a motion to approve this agreement?
I start back as the revised agreement that we gave out this morning.
The revised agreement.
Okay, that's what I was going to suggest. Yeah, revised.
Okay.
So move.
So I think we've got about six motions.
The motion's by us one person.
The motion doesn't matter. It counts what matters.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by raising your right hand.
Thank you.
Well, great. We're glad to hear.
I appreciate it. And if you'll forgive us, we need to get back to campus. We have some Board of Trustee meetings.
Okay, get going. Thank you for being here today.
All right, I think we've concluded the new business. County Manager's report.
Just want to give you a real quick update. As the board is aware, we approved of doing the street assessment ask for Lane Tree and Eagle Ridge. Those invitations or letters have been sent out to those residents, and so if you start getting phone calls or you start seeing Facebook blown up, wanted you to be aware that it's out now. We've given them to April 1 to get back with us with confirmation of what they would like to do so we can move forward one way or the other. So I do want to thank the work that Andrew has done on this. Kayla and Della in our office just did a great job of getting everything stuffed and ready to go, so just want to thank everybody for the work they did getting it out so quickly.
So let them know the process, if they'll be able to watch it. I mean, they get a letter?
They get a letter, and it'll basically, are you entered, you know, are you the property owner? And Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong, you're the property owner. I'll let Andrew.
Sorry, Andrew, I didn't...
This is legal. This is legal. I don't want to...
So, if you recall, good morning. If you recall, the statute provides that 75% of the residents, who make up 75% of the lenient fee in the neighborhood, have to be on the petition in order for us to proceed. The current petitions were submitted in 2016. As you can imagine, there's been a lot of property transfers since then, especially up in Lane Tree. So what we did, the Tax Office generated a new, not a new petition, but a new spreadsheet. So it has all the current owners on it. We drafted a letter that outlined exactly what the process is, and the, most importantly, the preliminary costs that came back from the engineers. So we sent that out. We made it clear that, we also sent a copy of the petition, and it lists the property address, and it has a petition status that says yes or no. So everybody who received that letter can check the petition and know if their property is a yes or if there's a no. We also included a postcard in there, and it has a box that they can check that says, "Please add me to the petition," or "Please remove me from the petition." They need to put their property address and then sign that. If it's owned by two people, both people have to sign in order for that to change. If we don't receive anything from the current property owner, then we're going to carry over the petition status from 2016. So what we have done is we've given everyone until April 1 to get those back to us. Once those come back, then I'll sit down with our clerk and with our planning director, and we'll go through line by line each property address and determine whether or not they meet the statutory threshold. We hope to do that the week of the 4th, and hopefully, we can get an action item back in front of the board at the second meeting in April. That's our current plan.
Also, let me ask you a question. You said that you'll carry over the 2016 survey or whatever document. So what does that mean for us? If they do not send it back from that address...
So for example, say that there's a property, a new property owner that acquired property in Lane Tree in 2018. If that's the case, and the previous owners signed the petition and they were on that, that property status carries over to the new owner. Because, and keep in mind, this is just the first step. So all we're doing right now is recertifying the petition. We wanted to do that before we go back to the board and say, "They meet the petition threshold, let's go out for construction bids." Once we come back from, we get our bids and we have a final projected cost, we have to notify everyone again with the final projected cost, including the final assessment. We have two public hearings where anybody can come and comment on the cost on the project, and then after the public hearings, we will put before you all what's called a preliminary assessment roll. Anyone can remove or add their name from that petition prior to you passing that preliminary assessment roll. If at any time before that preliminary assessment roll, it drops before, below 75%, then the project wouldn't move forward. So I don't want the owners to think that right now, just because they're saying yes or no, they're locked in. They're not locked in until we have those two public hearings and they receive final costs of what it's, what the project's going to cost.
That's what I wanted to make sure we reiterated, because I've had several calls already.
So if somebody just wants to mark yes right now, just so they can say, "Okay, move forward with it, let me see how much it's going to cost, and then I'm going to make a determination later on," they can do that.
They can change their mind after the fact.
Right. And they don't incur any costs. So if they remove, if it falls below 75%, they don't incur any costs until you all pass that preliminary assessment roll.
So when is it that we make sure they understand if the state takes it over, that's the end of the golf carts, the end of the four-wheelers, and is that, when does that come about?
So part of the process that they did in North Creek and Canterbury is, once the petitions were certified, we held a community meeting, I believe it was at a local church, and planning went out there, everybody went out there, and residents could ask questions from county staff, any questions they had. So we plan on doing that, both for Eagle Ridge and then Lane Tree, assuming that we, they still meet the 75% threshold after April 1.
Let me back up. I know I said that it cuts out the golf carts and the four-wheelers and all that stuff. I mean, it, it's, there's going to be a state-maintained highway, basically, so the rules will apply, the laws will apply inside that subdivision as they do on the secondary roads.
Correct.
And we are also moving forward with Eagle Ridge as well?
Both of them at the same time. So mailers went out to Lane Tree, there are 342 lots up there, and then at Eagle Ridge, there's 32. So obviously, the Eagle Ridge one's a little bit easier to certify than the 342.
Okay. When did you send the letters out?
Last Thursday, I believe. That's when they went out.
And you said the deadline is April 1?
April 1. That's what we put on, on the letter. I don't think we're going to probably get to it until probably the week of the 4th, so that was just the initial deadline since, to get, to get this moving, but obviously, if the board wanted to extend that out, we could, we could do that as well.
So was Eagle Ridge in the part before, or did they, did they have a survey sent out before as well or not?
They were, they had a petition, yes, sir.
So that, it applies to them as well, far as the, okay. How far as the, they were on it in 2016, they don't send it back, they're still on it now?
Same rules, yes, sir.
I just make sure they were, they had sent it.
And it's my understanding, if you get these letters back and you're below the 75%, then that is going to kill that project for...
We would bring it back to you for consideration, yes, sir.
For consideration. And then we would have to take action to...
You would make a determination that they don't meet the threshold?
They don't meet that guideline. Okay.
One, one thing I did want to mention, and I forgot, Joel, our Public Affairs, has put a website. It's wanggov.com/assessments, or you can scroll to the Planning Department and click on Street Assessments. It has a summary of the process. It has the statute that applies to this. It has the Wayne County policy that was, that was passed in 2015. It has a copy of the letter that was mailed out to the communities, and it has a copy of the current petition. So I will say, if any property owner, for whatever reason, didn't get something in the mail, please visit that website or call the Planning Department, and we can get them some information on if they want to remove their name, add their name, or if they just have questions. But also on that page is a list of frequently asked questions that we put together. They kind of address some of the common questions that we got the first time around. Like, one example is, what happens if I sell my home during the 10-year repayment period? That was a big question. So that's a good source of information. If someone did not receive a mailer, or if they want to add or remove their name, they can contact the Planning Department, and they will have that form that they can fill out and make an adjustment to their property as well. But everything is listed online too, so that's a good source of information.
That's the question that I was going to ask. I've been riding around with a package in my car for like two weeks now. Sometimes it's hard to get by the post office, it's hard to get stamps. You know what I mean? It's just, it's somewhat an inconvenience now for most people. It's just, it's somewhat an inconvenience now for most people. Um, I don't know, I mean, the deadline, you know, what's that, two and a half weeks that you're giving someone to send it back? You don't know, someone could be on vacation, it's spring break for a lot of people. It's, you know what I mean? People vacationing and stuff like that for kids, all that kind of stuff. Um, you know, so you might not get some back in time. Um, and then, you know, the online process, you know, most people do, I pay all my bills online, I do everything online, you know? Uh, I understand we have the information online, but why you don't have a system that a person can sign in online and say, "This is, we are saying yes or we're saying no," that would make that process a lot easier as far as getting the information back, get it a lot, get it back a lot faster and everything else, instead of just saying, "Mail it back." Because, you know, our mail system is running slow as well also. So it's a lot going on within that to say, "Two and a half weeks, have it back in." So I think that that should be something that should be looked at immediately before saying April first is the deadline, whether we extend the deadline or whatever, or try to update the online process as well to get them the information so they can fill it out online.
Yeah, I, I can talk to Joel and, and see if there is some sort of online process. I, I think our concern would be whether or not we know, how, how do we match up the, the, you know, the data entry to make sure that it is that property owner? I, I don't know how that would work. Um, I will say, the mailers that we sent out are our postcards, and they already have a stamp on it. So all the person has to do is just sign it, put it right back in the mailbox. So they don't even have to pay for, uh, mailing for postage on it. Well, that's why we did postcards, since the, you know, the, uh, stamps for those are a little bit cheaper, but we've already prepaid them, so they just have to sign it and send it right back. But I, I can't tell if, I mean, if they want to call into the Manager's Office or Planning and indicate that they would like to remove their name. Um, I know we did that the first time around in North Creek, so I think that would be acceptable here. We just, we have spreadsheets together, we can document that.
Okay. Any other questions?
If that's easier for them, they could, they could just call the Manager's Office or the Planning Department.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
That's all I have.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is County Managers' Report.
Oh, yes, that was-
That was it.
That was it.
That was it. My goodness, it was so long, I forgot where we were and began. Okay, now Board of Commissioners' comments. Mr. Foster.
Uh, no comments.
To Mr. Barbara Acock.
Well, I want to congratulate all the women who work for Wayne County, 'cause March is Women's Month, and that has been oversighted, and I want to thank all the ladies and everything, and all the women of Wayne County, because we all work very hard, and I think we're a very vital source to everything we do. Of course, every month, far as I'm concerned, is Women's Month. So thank you, ladies, for jobs well done. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention, and I agree. Thank, thank goodness for ladies.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Uh, yes. Um, I didn't intend on talking about this today, um, but the cat's out of the bag. Um, the county will be having its summer employment program, and I just want to thank, uh, Ginger Amor, HR. Um, I want to thank all our Commissioners for supporting the program and, um, the college as well. Um, you know, it's, it's a great thing when we can start to, um, give our, our kids and our community an opportunity where they can grow from within. And, and so I thank this, uh, Commission, um, for just supporting that program. Um, on another note, I also wanted to talk about some of, uh, the gun violence here in Wayne County. That's a topic that has not been, um, talked about. You know, we just lost, um, a young man, um, whose family is very pertinent to this community, the Williams family. Um, you know, and, you know, it's just to the point now where we're seeing, uh, young people and gun violence. It's just a terrible thing, and it's, it's like we're just becoming numb to it here in this county. And we need some help. It's, you know, the county Commissioners, you know, we do a lot behind the scenes. We need partners that are going to, um, get creative and talk about this cancer that's here in this community. And we have to save our young people. We have to save our families from this harm, and we can do it, but we have to have things in place, um, for our young people. And I think this summer employment program is a plus to help that, but we need many more things as well. So I'm, I'm calling out to the community to think outside the box, um, and let's work on some things that can change the dynamics here, because if we want to help the county, this right here with the gun violence, with the violence here is not helping the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hards.
I've got some good news. Um, the COVID rate is down to two percent in the, in the, um, UNC system, and we only have four COVID patients in Wayne Memorial right now, which is good. And the hospital is encouraging visitation again. So folks, it's a good thing.
Yes.
But, on the same note, is that we still, people that need their boosters, get your boosters, okay? It's still out there. Just because it's going down doesn't mean it's gonna disappear. And that's it.
Okay, great. Mr. Gurley.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we, um, Commissioner Hards, we said, we have a, uh, Highway seventy forty-two, I-42 meeting tomorrow in Smithfield, and the program, as about every other pro, every other month or every other meeting program, is on flood resilience, uh, since we're in District Four and live in eastern North Carolina, District Four, District Two, which is down toward the coast. Uh, and we'll have those, um, those people present for, um, for that. The, uh, we also have a TAC meeting on, um, Thursday morning, like it is, uh, uh, to discuss our local, um, projects, which won't be a whole lot, too, because we're still waiting on DOT, uh, funding for our major projects. I talked to Luther with, um, Wayne County's, uh, Wayne County Engineer, DOT. They are starting the, uh, paving project first of May, um, uh, excuse me, the, um, first of April, uh, the crossing of the Southern Wayne Water District line down by the, uh, fairgrounds. They'll be boring under, um, one seventeen south, at Legion Lake, sometime the first week in May. Uh, and then that project's gonna take, uh, well on in past the, the fair. Uh, I talked to their engineer, and he said that they would be suspending work during the, uh, fair process. Uh, uh, the last thing I've got is, we have, uh, on behalf of the, um, Board of Elections, uh, we have, uh, secured the Maxwell Center for, um, early voting in the general election year, or, uh, general election, uh, which will be in November or be October the eighteenth or something, whatever, the, two weeks prior to November the eighth, anyway. Uh, we have two rooms that we've, uh, we've acquired for that, and that's where we will be, uh, doing early voting, uh, uh, from now, from what I understand. So, uh, that being said, that's all I got.
Okay, good to know. Commissioner Acock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'd rip and you. Had, along with some of the rest of the Commissioners, uh, attended the Legislative Breakfast at Wayne Community College yesterday, uh, for the college to kind of, you know, lay out, you know, what they would like to, uh, get from the state and, uh, had a, had a, had a real good breakfast. Uh, also, uh, while we were at the college, uh, attended the ribbon cutting for the new welding facility, along with several of the other Commissioners. Uh, uh, great program, uh, well-attended by county officials, city officials, uh, citizens of the county, business owners, uh, great turnout. Uh, also, I had the pleasure, uh, me and the other Commissioner Acock had the pleasure of going to Belfast Fire Department Saturday night for their presentation, their award presentation. Uh, had a great meal, good fellowship, you know, thank y'all for the invitation. Uh, also, this coming Saturday night, uh, the first responder, this is a new pro, uh, new thing that's going on in county, new, new venture, uh, First Responder Appreciation Banquet at the Maxwell Center. Uh, I understand that, uh, they have having already, uh, all the sponsorships have been sold. Uh, I think they were, had planned for about seven hundred. All of the, all of the tickets have been sold, so we're looking for a great, great turnout for that. Also, uh, Saturday, and the Hunter Fire Department is having their annual barbecue and chicken supper. Uh, I'd favor one to come out and eat with them, starts at four and lasts until the food runs out. And let's see, I think that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I got one more question for you, sir. Uh, the Fire Association meeting is tonight. Yeah, yeah, I, I had it down there. The Fire Association meeting is tonight at Belfast. Uh, any of the Commissioners that would like to attend, uh, they try to eat about seven, and the meeting is seven-thirty, uh, and you're welcome to attend.
Okay. Folks, I, I, I was really impressed yesterday with the new welding center. I mean, I cannot stress how much of an improvement our, our welding center is, and you'd have to been there the before and after, and we actually need to get, Craig, we need to get the before and after. Uh, I think they had, uh, eleven stations, and they were dreary as I don't know what. They look like something from the dark ages. And now it is a modern update, very inclusive, uh, facility. Uh, it, it almost makes you want to go and, and be a part of that. I, I really was impressed with the computer programs that they had and the modules where you actually begin training on a computer. It's kind of like a, a, a game, uh, on your computer. Uh, and Representative Jimmy Dixon showed us his skills of actually welding, uh, on that, that module. But it was, it was very interesting, and I applaud the Community College, uh, for going ahead and getting that, uh, completed. Uh, I don't know what the next phase is, but I understand we are repurposing some of that, uh, existing building for other, uh, expansions. So great things going on at Wayne Community College, uh, and I, I really appreciate it. And I think Wayne County is going to see some benefits from that. Folks, if, if you are in a low-paying job and you want to improve your status in life, go visit Wayne Community College, and they'll show you a pathway, either through grants or other ways to make it possible for you to change your station in life. But you've got to make the first step. You've got to go out there and investigate it and find out those programs that are available. So with that said, uh, anything further? Uh, we are now going into closed session. I would entertain a motion that we go into closed session.
Somebody can move.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to go into closed session.
For the purpose of- Talking with your council to have Attorney Cloud.
All right, for that purpose, uh, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, simply by raising your right hand. Okay, we're now in closed session.
Can we?
Um, well, we've had all of our business of the day, and so I hereby adjourn.